Call this meeting the Redford Township Board of Trustees to order, please stand and take pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I give the invocation. Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you will find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all your purposes. Amen.
Amen.
For Christie, whenever you are ready, please take your role.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie, here. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy is absent. Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here. Former Mr. President, next Sunday is to approve the agenda. I would like to make one adjustment to the agenda moved from Senate, Agenda Item Number Three to New Business Number Four.
Support.
Okay, disboarded. Now just seen a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
To the Chair.
Ambassador, Ambassador Chief Jackson.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Support again by Treasurer Kavanaugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next, we have two citizen comments. Jen Mansfield.
Obviously, I am here today wearing my Chief of Police hat as compared to some of my other hats, but I wanted to make sure that the community is aware of two events coming up that we would love to see you at. First and foremost, during our festival, and I'm sure somebody will talk about this evening, during our festival on Saturday at noon, we have our annual Neighborhood Watch Picnic. It'll be right under the big tent where you would normally see the bands. It's kind of a potluck. We've got Officer Eddings has some stuff prepared, but hey, bring us some snacks, bring us some sweets, come out and enjoy hanging out with your neighbors. That's what we're about, and I'm sure you're gonna love that. The second event is we also have our Coffee with a Cop scheduled for June. We will be at McDonald's on Five Mile and Telegraph, the Five Mile and Telegraph McDonald's, on Tuesday, Tuesday, because I screwed this up at the chamber meeting this morning, Tuesday the 25th of June, 9:00 a.m. until 10:30 a.m. I know I'm gonna be there, and I'll have a couple other people there, a couple other officers, so come on out and chat with us. So lots of opportunities, I can't wait to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna, Sadja.
Sadja.
Sit, go ahead.
Call me Sue.
Okay.
My middle name's Christina too, I'll answer.
Okay, Christina.
Good evening, and thank you guys for holding this meeting. My name is Sadja Christina Hamadi, and I'm located at 23756 Michigan Avenue. I want to express that I appreciate all the changes that you guys have made to the ordinances that we're going to, the ordinance drafts that we're gonna review today. There's just a couple things that I wanted to just quickly bring to your attention. One of them is an unfinished business, Number Two, the packet, on Section Three, Number Five, which is Page Four. It looks like where you guys replaced 30 days with 180 days in writing, not the number, it says 108 as opposed to 180. So I would just fix that, so there's no confusion with the public, they might think, is it 108 or is it 180? So just a quick typo. And then, I'm glad that you guys did that, because I don't know if the public is aware of this, but you need a CFO to submit the full application to the state, and you can't get the CFO without build-out being complete, and you can't complete the build-out in 30 days. So I think that was a great edit on your part, and thank you guys for doing that. Next, this is the only other comment that I had, but Section Five, Number Four B, Subsection Five, and it's on Page Seven, and it ends at the end of Page Seven and the beginning of Page Eight. It looks like Number Five and Six were split into two, but it was supposed to be one, I believe, and it was just like someone may have just entered, and then it got split up into two, but it was supposed to be one. So I think that was just a little typo. And then, I was gonna politely ask that you guys, that you all reconsider not allowing someone to be, to move forward with the facility, with the marijuana facility if they were found guilty of a felony or a misdemeanor related to a drug charge, and the reason being is it would just contradict the state's social equity program, which says that anyone who has a marijuana-related conviction, they're allowed up to 25% off on their application, and if you have a felony, then you're allowed up to 40% off. So while the municipality is definitely allowed to have more stringent requirements in place, they're not allowed to contradict what the state allows, and so I think that just needs to be tailored so that the municipality is protecting itself from any really annoying with its attorneys. Which I'm not, I am an attorney, but I'm one of the nice ones. But I think that is all that I have, and thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes citizens' comments. Well, next is our departmental report from Director Mancini.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Board. I'm here to present the annual department report for the community of the department. I provide each of you with a lengthy printed report to review, but I will keep it short into the highlights tonight, I promise. However, I'm always grateful for the opportunity to share some of the accomplishments of the department and talk a little bit about the employees who work with me. In my opinion, the biggest news in the department since my last report is that we've hired a new employee in the Community Improvement Administrator position that I previously held. Ryan Stankis has been with us since late January and is doing a great job learning the programs and interacting with residents and contractors. He has already done great work with the Housing Rehab Program and is always interested in learning and helping whenever he can. He has quickly become a valued addition to the office and is fitting in nicely. I know most of you already know Jen McNaff, the CDBG admin whose contributions in our department are many. Without her assistance, running the office this past year would have been impossible. She has many duties within the department and also assists the Economic Development Director with many of his administrative and marquee duties. While we had a vacancy on our staff, Jen really stepped up to assist me with any additional tasks she could handle. Additionally, she assists the DPS Director with minutes for Planning Commission and ZBA, along with minutes for DDA meetings. She is an asset to this community and I'm lucky to have her on my staff. The Community Development Department also utilizes the services of a contract employee and former Township Building Inspector George Rosa, who works approximately eight to 10 hours a month assisting with project oversight and special projects as needed. His expertise and years of experience is a valuable resource for our programs and staff. Minak Meadows utilizes the experience of Robert Roach as the property manager of the 92-unit senior housing complex. Rob has been with the township almost 24 years. In addition to managing the maintenance and administration of the building, he manages relationships with the residents and staff. Rob's compassion and care for the seniors is top-notch and appreciated by all who know him. I'm not surprised that Rob is currently operating at a 97% occupancy rate. Tim Young was hired last September to fill the maintenance supervisor position. He has been a great addition to the team and has been learning his duties under Rob's direction. We are thrilled with the addition, and Rob says he is a perfect person for the job. We also employ one contract employee at Minak, Rick Ritz, who assists Rob and Tim with maintenance duties and assisting the residents. The Community Development Department, with the exception of Minak Meadows, is entirely grant-funded. We utilize funding through HUD's Community Development Block Grant to provide needed services to lower-income individuals. We perform this work through various activities and programs. The department finalized our 2425 Action Plan with court approval at the May 28th meeting and have submitted that plan to HUD for their approval. The HUD entitlement allocation for program year 2425 is $846,005. The complete budget was presented to you in May and is also in your packet. We are currently working on the environmental review for program year 2425 and will proceed to public comment when complete, prior to submitting to HUD for their objection period. Upon completion of that process, we will receive the authority to use grant funds for these program year funds. Attached to the packet is a draft copy of the 2324 CAPER. The CAPER is the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report that is required to be submitted to HUD each year. The report details our department's accomplishment for the year as they relate to projects completed and funding spent. This report is currently in the 15-day public comment period, which began on the 9th and will end on the 24th. On June 24th, we will hold a public hearing with the CDBG Advisory Committee and then proceed to submit the report to HUD. In this report, I will be summarizing some of the data that is in the CAPER, as well as discussing current projects and coming projects. Under the CDBG program, we focus a lot of our efforts to improving our neighborhoods through blight elimination, housing repairs and renovation, and homeownership programs. Our SNAP program has been very successful in this effort over the years. The program begun under HUD's NSP program to help communities recover from the housing crisis and has continued by Redford Township with the use of CDBG funds. Through this program, we fully renovate blighted properties and sell those properties to low-to-moder income homebuyers. We provide these buyers with the opportunity to realize the dream of homeownership and provide down payment assistance to help with these efforts. This program has provided many benefits to the community by removing blighted homes either through demolition or renovation, encouraging homeownership by providing financial assistance, and increasing property values for neighboring homes. The CAPER reflects two homes sold in 2324, 15855 Winston and 10051 Dixie, and the rehabilitation of 25550 School Craft, which was sold in May of this year. Currently, we are working on 25468 Ivanhoe and will begin another renovation project in the next couple months. Under the SNAP program and site clearance activities, we have completed demolition of a blighted property at 15883 Woodbine and have assisted the township with demolition planning and oversight of the old Wick Building on Five Mile. The neighboring property owner has expressed interest in purchasing the vacant lot on Woodbine, and I should be coming to the board in the coming months for approval. Currently, we are waiting demolition to begin on a severely blighted property at Grand River in Seminole. The contractor will begin contents removal this week to make way for the hazardous material abatement scheduled to begin next Wednesday. The demolition will begin immediately after the clearance for abatement is received. The completion of this project will make a huge impact on the neighborhood, and we are excited to provide that assistance. A staple of the block grant program is the Housing Rehabilitation Program that Redford Township has been operating for many years. This program provides funding for home improvement projects through grants or low-interest loans to our low-to-moder income homebuyers. We recently overhauled the program to increase the maximum investment and to focus on the elimination of blight hazards from our housing stock. The changes to the program took some time to get up and running, and we are moving forward and are off to a great start. I am happy to say that even with being short-staffed and expanding the program, we completed 12 housing rehab projects last year. With the addition of Ryan to the team, we have already completed six projects since April 1st and currently have two projects out for bid, with several others on the way. I am hoping we have a record year this year with the Housing Rehab Program, as we are off to a promising start to a program that has been suffering in neighboring communities. Other activities included, include providing funding to dial-a-ride services that provide transportation for Redford's senior population, funding for Redford's Interfaith Relief that provides food and homeless resources for our most at-risk populations, senior citizen and youth services programming through the Redford Senior Center, along with funding to maintain the Redford Senior and Community Center. We are also still utilizing CDBG CV funds that were provided to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have approximately $345,000 left on this grant that must be used and tied to PPR, tieback of COVID. Through discussions with HUD, we were preliminarily approved to improve the ventilation in the senior center by installing operable windows. The ventilation issue would be considered an acceptable way to prepare for another COVID-like outbreak. Since this is a change from our original intended purpose, we will be required to prepare a substantial amendment and follow HUD's process to gain approval. That approval will include coming before the board. Once approved, we can proceed with that project. The Community Development Department is also assisting with the administration of the $2 million CPF grant the township was awarded from Congresswoman Talib's office for assistance with construction of the new Rec and Wellness Center. This includes all environmental compliance issues and reporting requirements. Some of the other activities the department has been involved with include serving on the Rec and Wellness Center Committee, providing training facilities to Redford Police and Fire Departments, working with the Water Department to collect outstanding water balances for our residents using my half-funding. In your packets, I have included some additional information for your review, including completed projects and future projects. I would like to close by stating that I'm so proud to work in the Community Development Department. The services we provide with the block grant funding are essential to our residents and provide very rewarding work for those of us who work in that department and these programs. It is a pretty good job to have when your sole purpose is to help people. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I just wanna say that, I'm gonna talk slowly to give you a chance to breathe.
Thank you.
And we are very lucky and proud to have you in this position.
Thank you.
And as everybody could hear, by all the information that was given, the Community Development Department is very, very busy in very many ways, so I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions on this. Questions from the board? See what happens when you do a really big job.
I guess.
We don't go with the ask, because you covered it all.
I appreciate that.
So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as amended. The minutes of the regular meeting of May 28th, 2024, the warrant list of bills as of June 8th, 2024, in the total amount of $1,102,382.41. The fourth quarter investment earnings report, January 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2024, on file for audit.
Support.
Mr. McCray, support. Questions from the board? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is unfinished business. Mr. Chubb.
Good evening, Board. Great to see all of you again. So we have two items up this evening that are just both minor modifications. We reviewed everything and determined that the publication was not affected of either of these ordinances, and the effective date is 10 days after publication, and so there are a lot of dates that are tied to publication, which everyone, especially potential, insists no. Well, it's all based upon that publication date. While we were going through everything to ensure that that could be done, we came up on some minor changes. One was that in the city council meeting, or in the board meeting rather, that we had the second reading, it was Trustee King had made the recommendation for Section Nine, so A sub seven, which added 250 feet between any marijuana processor and any marijuana grow facility within the industrial overlay district. Yeah, and so that's the only change to this first item that you're taking a look at in your unfinished business. Always happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Hearing any questions from the public? Okay, it was pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Articles 10, 12, 13, and 14.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So motions to approve the second reading of Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishment, Articles 10, 12, 13, and 14. Any other discussion? Hearing on the board.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy? Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Mr. Chubb?
All right, so the second ordinance that you have before you is the Marijuana Regulatory Ordinance, and so this likewise just has a minor change, which if you look at Page Four, it's Section Three, Item Five, and that sets out the timing between the issuance of the conditional license and the final license. If an individual was going to use a pre-existing and pre-completed building, the 30 days that previously applied may have been sufficient, but if they were contemplating larger renovations particularly, we think that it makes sense to elongate the timing. It goes from 30 days to 180 days and additionally provides the board the authority to enter into an additional extension of 180 days if good cause applies on a case-by-case basis, which would require an application from the board. As it relates to the language here, after speaking with Supervisor McCray, there was a potential request in the second additional language. It would be where it states that the applicant can request one extension of 180 days. He may be interested in changing that to up to 180 days, so that if the board determined that circumstances warranted an extension but not to the full 180 days, or if an applicant requested one that was less than 180 days, that could be done at the discretion of the board. And then additionally, there was a noted typographical error that I agree with, which is in the first change, and it's just the spelling of 80 is omitting a Y, so it says eight. The 180 days in the parentheses is accurate, but we should amend, approve this amendment, I'm sorry, the second reading with the amendment as amended by those recommendations, if it's the board's pleasure.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee King.
Mr. Chubb, are there any municipalities that don't issue the, what is the contingent license or?
A conditional license.
Yeah.
It really just depends, the problem is that when you're doing it by using setbacks and include setbacks from each other, then you typically would have to issue the conditional so that they can reasonably engage in the, you know, the development of the property with the understanding that they do have the right to the license if they comply with all the other obligations during the time period.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes. Other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Ms. Jackson?
Attorney Chubb, if 180 days is only necessary if somebody is renovating an existing property, why wouldn't we specify that as opposed to giving everyone 180 days?
So, you know, so this is the timing period for them to apply and obtain the final license, and while I was referencing the necessity for build-out because that's what typically we would see, you know, as what's forward-facing to the community, there's a lot of administrative process at the Marijuana Regulatory Authority, and so I think that the timing of that likely 30 days may be insufficient as well. So there's two pieces to it, but the state administrative side would support the 180 days. Additionally, that is, that would be very quick to have an operational facility within the community, so we would be, we should be very happy if they did comply with that 180-day standard to be fully operational.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Tony, also catching that other typo on Page Seven, Number Five at the bottom, I believe she's also correct on this, that it looks like somehow Number Five got separated into a five and a six instead of just five. You see the paragraph at the top of Page Eight continues. See how it continues? It's actually one paragraph, but it's got two numbers. So at the bottom of Page Seven and the top of Page Eight.
I apologize, I see what you're saying now.
Yeah. So then that would change the whole numbering system moving forward after that, so it would literally just be five, and then the next one would be six, seven, eight, nine. We'd have to change all of those to have the numbering correct.
Sure, that's correct, so it would be amended to simply remove, combine paragraphs five and six, and then do the necessary renumbering subsequent.
And can I also inquire about other municipalities and what their ordinance, their licensing ordinance does say regarding marijuana felonies, and whether or not, I mean, because it does state that even if it's expunged or pardoned or reversed, you still can't qualify for a license here in Redford?
Sure.
Is that in conflict with the state law?
Well, let's, is it in direct conflict with the state law, which would mean that it was contrary to it, no, but I think that what was referenced by the speaker is accurate as to some of the social justice initiatives that have been implemented and recommended at the state law. That's completely something that would be a determination of this board as to what is proper social, I guess, goals or social determinations.
So the state is allowing licenses for people who have a drug felony record, not only allowing them, but allowing them the opportunity
It, well, let's see. Is it in direct conflict with the state law, which would mean that it was contrary to it? No. But I think that what was referenced by the speaker is accurate as to some of the social justice initiatives that have been implemented and recommended at the state law. That's completely something that would be a determination of this board as to what is proper social, I guess, goals or social determinations.
So the state is allowing licenses for people who have a drug felony record? Not only allowing them, but allowing them the opportunity to get into the business at the state level? They're allowing that, correct?
That is correct, yes.
But they're not requiring municipalities to follow suit? Is that accurate?
Municipalities can have more detailed exemptions or limitations.
So anyone who qualifies under the state under that social movement to allow them to get into the business would just not be able to get a license here in Redford, but they may be able to get one in another municipality?
In another community that allowed the, purely the limitations of criminal, you know, criminal, I guess, the criminal restrictions that apply at the state level only. If another community applied only that for the local level, which was to say it wasn't any more restrictive, then that is accurate.
To the Chair.
Trustee King.
Attorney Chubb. In my reading, the state offered social equity programs to certain communities based on the makeup of that community and how the drug wars have impacted citizens of those communities. And some of those communities are named. And I believe that is what the attorney, the previous speaker was speaking of. Redford isn't one of those communities that's named in the social equity program at the state level.
Yes, I mean, so it would, the closest would be Detroit, obviously.
Okay.
Do you know if Ann Arbor participates?
I couldn't say without doing a little more research.
Okay. So, but we could always, if we decided that we wanted to, that could always be changed later on down the line once we get this process going.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, so, and I guess that's what I would recommend. Again, this is something that is solely at the determination of the board. You know, it's, it's not a legal question. It's absolutely an administrative question. And so what I would recommend is that we move forward at this point, understanding as I referenced that all dates, including the application deadline, are reset by publication 10 days, which would be effective 10 days after publication, which would be subsequent to passing these since publication was not effectuated previously. So we do have some time because what I would like is that we need to make sure that the applicants understand where they stand and that we give them plenty of time if they are ineligible under this language, but we're considering an alternative, that they would know that prior to acceptance of applications, obviously.
So Mr. Chubb, I guess what I'm wondering is, if we leave it as is, are we breaking any law?
No.
So we, so we're just making it more stringent on who can have the enterprise here in the township and making the law a little tougher? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
But we're not breaking the law in, how, by not, by leaving it like this, do we expose ourselves to lawsuits? I mean, anybody can sue us, right? But has it been your experience that this has caused other communities that may have something similar to be sued because they don't have that part in their, in their ordinance?
I'm not familiar with any similar lawsuits.
All right. Other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
That last statement that we're changing for an extension, are we going to include up to 180 days in that? In that statement? That wasn't clear to me.
It's at the discretion of the board. Up to.
Up to. Yeah, I would recommend that we say up to 180 days.
Other questions from the board? Comments from the audience?
Mike, we'd just like to quickly provide clarification in regards to one of the things that were mentioned. The social equity program is two-pronged. There's one part of it that, that is specific to the municipalities and says that if you're within these municipalities and you've lived within those municipalities within a certain frame of a period of time for at least two years, then you're eligible for a discount. But then there's also a separate prong that's about convictions, felony and misdemeanor convictions that are related to controlled substance and specifically marijuana that'll give you that additional discount no matter where you are in the state. So it's, it's two-pronged. And then also, if you guys have any administrative or cannabis-related questions, I'm always more than willing to answer them, given that's my area of specialization. But other than that, I'd also just like to say that I would argue that while the law at the state level does not say that municipalities can't go ahead and provide those additional restrictions, and you guys are, and municipalities are more than allowed to provide additional restrictions. The restrictions just can't be contradictory in nature. And given that the state went out of its way to produce the social equity program to specifically help those who were disproportionately impacted by marijuana convictions in the first place, I would argue that this could be screwed as a, as a contradiction. And then my fear is if somebody does bring a lawsuit against the municipality, it's going to put all of the other applications, applications on hold. Because what the first thing the attorney is going to do is request a preliminary injunction to put everybody else on hold. And then everyone will get delayed and nobody will be able to move forward because one attorney decided, you know, to sue on behalf of their, their client, which is not favorable for everybody else. But if you guys have any questions for me, please, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing on most pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Establishment Ordinance to authorize the operation and provide regulations with amendments recommended.
Support.
Court by Treasure Kavanaugh. Motion is to approve the second read of the Marijuana Establishment Ordinance, authorize the operation and provide regulation ordinance as amended. Any other questions? Hearing on roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next is new business. Director Stone.
Good evening, Honorable Board. Before you, you have the lease amendment agreement. This is the cell tower lease that's over at Claude Allison Park that has expired. So we've been working the past several months to get an agreement with a current company that's utilizing this cell tower company. So we are requesting the approval of the First Amendment to the Communications Site Lease Agreement and Memorandum of Lease Agreement between the Charter Township of Redford and T-Mobile USA. Just a couple of notes about this. We added five additional extensions, five years each. So it would end in 2048. The rent increase is going from $1,711.45 to $3,700 a month. And this will increase on the anniversary date a 4% for the Consumer Price Index for the Metropolitan Detroit area, whichever one is higher. And then they added the right of first refusal in the event that the township would ever like to sell. And then a $10,500 signing bonus. For us or them?
Questions? Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
Would other leases follow suit? So it's not just T-Mobile?
Yeah, so we, I constantly get questions from our current cell tower leases that they want to early extend theirs. So we actually have one more that already has approached us. So we're working on that. It does take some time to get these taken care of just because it, they, we go back and forth on how much the township believes that we should be getting from these. We have been working with Mike Watzza, who has been doing all of our cell towers. He actually did the negotiations back when we got the new ones with American Tower. So he works very closely with us on these and he's very instrumental in the cell tower business right now. So know what, knows what's going on and what the going rate are pretty much.
Okay. I also, my question would be, would another leasing be proposed the same amount? Or is there a difference as far as? Because I know they piggyback and they have different policies.
Yeah, it depends too on how many tenants are on their towers.
Right.
So some will do, you'll get their, you know, the base lease. And then if they get any additional tenants on their towers, sometimes you can get a percentage of whatever tenant they bring on after that point. So it all depends on how many tenants are on their towers. Sometimes tenants drop off their towers. So at least the base stays with that. And then, you know, depending on if they add a new additional one on there, that could be additional revenue for us. Not in this current one.
Right.
But with additional cell towers that we have, that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing on? Trustee King?
Yes.
Is it, is it customary to have so many additional lease terms they have?
Yes. So this has been pretty much the standard over, since I've been involved in this. They usually do about five, five-year extensions with it. And they do note in there that we can cancel early, they can cancel it early. There's always an out clause in both of these and it just tells you how many days you need to give notice for that.
Okay.
But it's very standard.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
Other questions from the board? Hearing on most pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the First Amendment Communications Site Lease Agreement and Memorandum of Lease Agreement with T-Mobile USA Tower LLC for cell tower at Claude Allison. Support.
Move this forward. The motion is to approve approval of the First Amendment to the Communications Site Lease Agreement and Memorandum of Lease Agreement with T-Mobile USA Tower LLC for cell tower at Claude Allison Park. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Mansfield.
Good evening, Honorable Board. I am back with you. I believe my first agenda item is the agreement between Redford Township and Clemess. You should have a memo in front of you. What Clemess does is they run our CAD for our dispatch system, our reporting system, our mug shot system, and then they do similar things for the fire department as well as our management system of reports. So they're a pretty big, important aspect of what police and fire departments do. What I'm asking for this evening is a renewal of a partnership that already exists. Clemess asks for a renewal of that partnership approximately every five years. And since we started this in 2019, here I am, asking for this. What I do need is a motion authorizing Supervisor McCray to sign the agreement as well. There's a specific Clemess addendum which lists all the different aspects of what this partnership includes, as well as a witness signature and the authority granting Supervisor McCray to do so. Any questions for me?
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Oh.
Trustee Taylor.
Chief Mansfield, I was just wondering, just Oakland County, is this not a service that is offered in Wayne County? Is this kind of a one?
This is a one-stop shop. Clemess is the largest. As you remember, we used to be part of a different system, OSI, that in fact folded, was bought out and then had other ones. There's really only one other system that I'm aware of, Tyler, and that's used mostly downriver. The biggest advantage of using Clemess, other than the size, is the simple fact that our partnership communities around us utilize the same system. And that comes into play when you're looking at the data that we're allowed to share amongst each other. I actually know the same people that are involved in activities in multiple different communities.
Okay.
So there's not one specific to Wayne, and it's a very niche area.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Very niche.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Chief Mansfield, what, how much does this cost us? And how do we pay for this?
That's a great question. We pay quarterly, is how Clemess invoices us. And it's broken up into a lot of different methods. On the police department's side, we are charged by the number of sworn officers as well as a user, an overall user fee. It has to do with the number of computer systems we have. So the number of computers within our vehicles, the ones in the station. I didn't say the mug shot. The mug shot as well as a monitoring, a 24/7 fee, which by the way, that's huge, the 24/7 servicing fee. On the fire side, they are charged by the individual firehouse as well as just a one-time user fee. Clearly, we utilize that system more than the fire department does. On the police side, you're looking at approximately $40,000 a year. And on the fire side, around $9,000. And what they do is they put out a, a fee system. And I do have copies of it if you guys care to see. There's currently the tiers and the fees for 23, 24, and 25 available online to see exactly how we are charged. And I was going over it and I think they're cutting us a deal somewhere I don't know about. So we're not going to tell them. Just saying.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing on most pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the agreement for IT services of Clemess for the police and fire departments and to authorize Supervisor McCray to sign the agreement and the Clemess addendum.
Support.
Court by Trustee Jackson. So motion is to approval, for the approval of the agreement for IT services of Clemess for the police and fire department and to authorize Supervisor McCray to sign the agreement and the Clemess addendum. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Is it Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Chief, you're up again.
I know, next up. You also have a memo in front of you. This particular memo is asking for your approval to utilize some JAG funds from 2021. This is a change in the budget and what we had asked to utilize those funds for earlier in the game. What we are looking to purchase now is we are looking to purchase six radar traffic signs that we can put up in the community to help address some of the complaints that we've been getting for speeders and whatnot. What specifically I'm asking for is to purchase three solar-powered radar signs and three battery-powered. The three solar ones would be placed what I would consider to be more permanently. They'd be set up somewhere for about a year, and those will be at different schools. And, you know, at the end of each school year, maybe we move them to a different school. The battery-powered ones, we intend to move around the township about every two, two weeks or so, depending on how long those batteries last, in an effort to address some of the complaints that are out there. So the particular motion I'm asking for is to purchase these radar signs through radar sign. You guys should have the quotes in front of you. A grant total will be $22,449. Our grant will cover $19,804.64, and the remaining 26.44 and 26 cents will come out of our operating expenses at the PD.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, we've been having a lot of problems over the last couple of years for sure. People losing their mind driving the neighborhood. We've moved the mobile sign around to different areas, and we're able to gather some data, which is always great, because that way we know what's happening and how often, and if we have an officer available to assign out. This will give us the larger areas that we can grab data from. You know, we're hoping that people that are doing it maybe are not paying attention because there's nobody around, so they're just going. If they see how fast they're going and they'll slow down, that's the hope. And I think that this is something positive for our community. I really appreciate the chief taking us on and doing this. I strongly support this for our community. Our residents need something out there to make them feel better about where they live, and this will do that.
To the chair.
Trusty Taylor.
Chief Mansfield, is there statistical evidence to show that these radar signs are a deterrent, or is it mostly used to gather data for the police departments to find the problem area?
I would say it's predominantly used to gather data. There is a little bit that shows that some people slow down. There's also data that shows that some people speed up because they're trying to break the clock, if you will. Predominantly, in the cases of people such as Supervisor McCray, what he was referring to as people that were just not paying attention, it does have an impact, and that's kind of what we're hoping for. So that people are paying attention, and they do slow down. I'm looking forward to being able to collect these statistics here in our township and maybe come before you with my annual report to show you what those statistics are. We intend to show some of them through our social media as we gather them. I think a lot of people think that people are going faster than they are, and they think that it's happening more often than they are because it's what you see. When you look out your window, if you just see your stop sign, you think it's happening all day long, and I don't disagree. But I'd like to be able to have those numbers available to present to you. If you were not aware, I cannot write tickets off of this sign. There's no cameras attached to it. It doesn't do that. But what it does do is provide us the data so that when I have additional manpower available, I could say, oh, this particular corner is in fact showing a large number of speeders. Let's get somebody out there. Let's find a way to make it happen. So I want to be able to show that to you guys and perhaps make our roads a tad bit safer.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
You indicated that you would move the battery-powered.
The battery-powered signs. Yes, ma'am.
As long as the batteries lasted. Don't we have the option to replace those batteries?
No, we absolutely do. And it's, what would the plan would be as, because the recharge, the batteries are rechargeable back at the station, and actually, we're purchasing a couple extras so that we can just do a switch. As the battery dies where it's posted, our traffic bureau, Officer Vance, will be running out there to get that sign, move it somewhere else, put a new battery into it, and then recharge the other one so that we, hopefully, we have the least amount of lag time between different locations, based upon some of the complaints that we get, is how we're going to move those battery-powered ones around.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Trusty King.
Chief, I heard you say that some might be stationed near schools.
Yes, sir.
Will any of these be getting readings from residential traffic from residential, just regular streets?
What, right now, where we are preliminary planning on putting the first three signs, maybe this will answer your question, is we're looking at placing them somewhere on Curtis Road near the Redford Union School District right there because we've had a lot of complaints there, and having gone there, I know that's a usual racetrack. So we want to try and get it there. We want to put one down on the south end. We are currently looking near Fisher Elementary, Brady, and like Orange Lawn. That seems to be a big one for us. And the other place that we're really looking to put it is right at Beach Daily and Grand River, where we have that intersection of the three schools. That will be on a main thoroughfare, so that'll show a little bit different data, but that may be something that as we gather that data, perhaps we'll be able to have enough information to petition the county to lower the speed limit there during certain times.
The reason I ask is because some citizens feel that we should institute speed bumps.
Yes.
You know, and I'm not completely sold on that.
Well, and the biggest reason that we can't do speed bumps is right now, we don't have the trucks that'll be able to plow over them, which is our biggest concern at this point. The city of Detroit, because obviously, that's our biggest competitor, for lack of a better word, when people say, well, the city has them, they have their own trucks that they utilize to do snow plowing and all sorts of those things. I'm not sure Mr. Dennis wants to buy new trucks. That would be the biggest issue there.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not completely.
I'm not saying that they're, they, they work to an extent, but at the same time, you're changing the people that are upset about speeders to now you're going to get people upset that their cars are damaged. Or the other risk of speed bumps, while it may make somebody slow down, if they hit that speed bump going at whatever ridiculous speed they were thinking of going, you're now increasing the chances of a crash because they're going to launch, or they're going to lose control of their vehicle. And I think that's a big concern as well, and I, to be fair, I don't know if there's any studies on that to see if there's been more crashes, but my 25 years on the job says people are going to go fast and they can't control their cars.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%, and they also, there's some studies that say they slow the emergency response.
That is absolutely possible, especially depending on which patrol vehicles we're driving. Hopefully, we're not trying to go that fast down the road, but if there's a shooting in progress, or there's a life-threatening, critical emergency that you want rescue to get to, sometimes seconds matter, and you don't want us to have to slow down, or the fire guys to have to slow down in order to preserve their vehicles, because that's also on the taxpayers' as every time we got to repair a vehicle. That's on you guys as well, and myself.
To the chair.
Trusty.
This is just as a comment. I think also, it's good to also let people know that we have to work in conjunction with Wayne County in the fact that it's their roads, and also, they have criteria in order to put the speed bumps where we're asking to put them. So I think that's also something.
They're not our roads.
Residents should know too, yeah.
It is important. It's not that we're not listening.
Yeah.
It's something we can't do.
Well, I think this is, is the, for what we can find right now, this is the best solution to the, to our problem, other than being able to find a bunch more officers to put on the road, which we'd be glad to do.
We're hiring if y'all have anybody that wants to be the police.
Send them our way. So I think this is a good solution. I know that the captain, or the chief.
Wow, I've been demoted.
Every, you've been captain too long. I know the chief and her staff have been looking at all the different ways that we can possibly be more aggressive with speeders in our neighborhood, and at this point, this is, I think, the best we've come up with for now, is if somebody comes up with a new invention.
I'm all ears.
It would be first in line to get that too, because we want to be safe in our neighborhoods. We don't want to have to worry about somebody running somebody over.
I am all ears and will happily write a grant for it if we can come up with it.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Herr Christie.
I move to approve the purchase of six new traffic signs through radar sign, including three solar-powered units at the cost of $12,369, and three battery-operated units at the cost of $10,080, with a total cost of $22,449 covered by the money awarded from the 2021 JAG grant.
And a portion from my operating costs.
Right, so, okay, do we have second?
Too far.
So the motion is to approve the purchase through radar sign, three battery-powered at the cost of $10,080, and three solar-powered at the cost of $12,369, with the total cost of $22,449. The 2021 JAG grant will pay for $19,804.64, and the remaining balance of $2,644.26 will be taken from the operating expenses fund of the, of the police department.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
The motion passes. Chief?
Get them ordered tomorrow, sir.
And what's the turnaround we figure?
I'm hoping that I should have them delivered to me within the month. These are pretty standard signs, so I'm hoping they have them all in stock. So if so, I'll be calling Mr. Dennis over there to help me get some of them installed.
Great, thank you, Chief.
I need your help, sir.
You need help.
Director Mancini.
I come before you tonight with my recommendations for the SNAP developer program for the developer selections. An RFQ for the program was issued on May 2nd, and there were six bid packages submitted. I did provide you with the rating sheet earlier this evening. The qualifications for each applicant were reviewed and rated using our standard rating system. The two developers that scored the highest with HP Snap Investments LLC out of Redford and FPJ Investment LLC out of Detroit, I am recommending to the board to select both developers to partner with Redford Township for the SNAP developer program, year 2425, with a program expiration date of December 1st, '25.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trusty Kavanaugh.
How many properties are we looking at?
So as of May 9th, which is the last list I have, there is a total of 24 parcels. However, of those 24 parcels, there's approximately 13 that would be available for the developers, and that is if they are all still available when they give us the list, because it does tend to vary. Eight of those are parcels that the township are interested in, and then there are some vacant parcels for the SNAP program as well. So there's not, there's not a lot of houses available.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair. Yes. I move to approve the recommendation approval for the SNAP 2 program, developers' acquisition redevelopment and resale of tax-for-closed properties PY 2024 and 2025.
Support.
For Trustee Jackson. The motion is approved, the recommendation approval for the SNAP 2 program, developers' acquisition, redevelopment, and resale of tax-for-closed properties PY 2024 to 2025. Any questions? Do we need to roll call them? Or just approve them?
Let's just approve this one.
Okay, all on paper?
We're on tap.
All on paper?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, announcements from the board.
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
The CARES program of Birmingham Hills. CARES provides services to individuals and families in Birmingham Hills and the seven of its surrounding communities, in Oakland and Wayne County. Their program, I mean, their fundraiser is on Wednesday, August 7th, and they're having a duck race. And you can support their fundraiser by buying one quack, which is one little duck, for $5, up to a golden duck sponsor for $10,000. So I encourage everyone to at least buy one quack to help out the CARES program. And I do have some forms up here, if anybody's interested in filling out a form, and you can also go to cares.com, their website. And I do encourage everyone to support their fundraiser because they are a very worthy nonprofit that helps our community as well as other surrounding communities.
To the chair. This is just a reminder, we are doing vaccinations for the dog program. I do have licenses, but just so people know that the DPS building will be open for licenses only on Saturday, along with Telweger's vaccination program. You also have not only this Saturday, but Saturday, the 22nd. Also, DPS will be open for licenses and the vaccinations with Telweger's behind the DPS building. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Herr Christie.
I'd like to introduce our new deputy clerk, Mr. Darian Burt, who has several announcements on behalf of the clerk's office. So Darian, could you come up and?
All right, thank you. So right now, we have, we have two elections coming up. We have the primary, which is August 6th, and then the general election, which is going to be November, the, I have fifth, I think it's the 8th. No, it's the 8th. So right now, we need election inspectors, people to help at different precincts. We have a dire needed that. There are trainings that happen. It is easy to do, so if you're part of the community, you'd like to be a part of that, go ahead and come on to the clerk's office or email at clerk@redfordtwp.com. There are some precinct location changes as well leading up to the election. So Hilbert, if you're, if you're at that precinct, you'll be moving to Loretto, Our Lady of Loretto. If you are, if you are at the east of Telegraph, so we're talking the World Peace Outreach, what was formerly known as DWO, as well as Pierce or Fisher, you'll be moving to Thurston High School for this coming election. And then lastly, if you're at Jefferson School or Vandenberg School, you'll be moving to Adams. Couple more things here. If you'd like to vote early in voting, I'm sorry, in-person voting, that's going to be town hall nine days prior to the election, so come on down and vote early. If you are an absentee voter, we have drop boxes at three different locations within the township. We have here at Town Hall, Claude Allison Park further north, and then the Leo Snage Building, south. And then lastly, I do want to reiterate that we do need election inspectors, so if you want to come on and have fun at the polls, come on and do that. Thank you so much, and thank you.
And I'd like to again underscore our need for election inspectors. We had a big drop-off between February and May. May, we had, it was just South Redford. We couldn't have had early voting in May if we were required to because of the big drop-off of election inspectors. August is going to be a larger election, and we will be required to have early voting. In fact, we're encouraging, encouraging people whose polling location has changed, rather than trying to find your new polling location that you'll have for that one election, we're trying to get you hooked on early voting. You can come to Town Hall during those nine days before the election, during regular business hours, and vote. And we're hoping, and when I say we, clerks, municipal clerks, we're hoping that this takes on, that we were promoting early voting. It was a big flop in, in February. We don't want that. We, we want people voting early, and this is, you know, the opportunity for you to come to Town Hall and vote early rather than trying to find your new polling location, although Darian Burt did tell you where you would be voting in, in August.
To the chair. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Pride Month, and to acknowledge June as Pride Month. For anyone who loves somebody on this flag, you know how far we still have to go for them to feel safe, and to feel seen, and to feel loved, and that to remind everybody that any kind of love is better than every kind of hate. So happy Pride Month to everybody. I wish it was every month of the year.
Anything else from the board?
Okay, Mike Dennis is going to make his way to Mike, so in case I miss anything for the festival, since he failed to fill out a form, he's, he's going to assist the supervisor. This weekend is our Township Community Festival, and this will start on 13 Thursday evening with cornhole and, and music and entertainment, and rides in Midway from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Friday, we will have fireworks, rides from noon to 10:00, face painting from 7:00 to 10:00, live music, Gypsy and the Rockers from 7:00 to 10:00. There'll be free shuttles from Town Hall, food trucks Friday, 6:00 to 10:00, and Saturday, 1:00 to 9:00. Kids will have face painting and crafts and bounce houses, and there'll be live music on that day, Ron Devon from 3:00 to 6:00, and Vinyl Underground from 7:00 to 11:00. On Sunday, Father's Day, the same thing, the, the rides will run from noon to, it says PM, I don't know what PM is, Mike. Noon to PM, so.
I didn't write it.
Okay, good. Kiparan flying from 2:00 o'clock to 4:00, zoo, petting zoo from 1:00 to 3:00, touch a truck from 2:00 to 4:00, live music, Phil May from 3:00 to 7:00. You can get ride tickets, discount pre-sale tickets for 20 bucks. Regular tickets at the park are $30 for Friday, Saturday, 25 for Thursday and Sunday. Pre-sale tickets are available at the Redford Community Center or the clerk's office. Now, Mike is going to fill in all the blanks.
Now, Mike is going to fill in all the blanks.
Yeah. I want to go home. Sorry, I do not feel, as you can tell.
On the shuttle?
Every yes, yeah. We can't stress enough that everyone should use the shuttle service that's free to the public, park here at Town Hall. The shuttle will take you from here to the Dog Creek Drive, drop you off, and then when the fireworks are over, fireworks start at dusk, 10:00 p.m., and they're done about 10:22, roughly, and then we funnel everyone to the buses, which are on Five Mile Road. We will have shuttles from Redford, but also from South Redford School District is offering their buses to us again, and big thanks to them for that help. And it takes roughly, maybe half an hour. We do not open up the roads until everyone is out of the park and the shuttles are done. You know, so that's something that we've been doing for, you know, quite a bit now. Parking is limited on-site, so again, we stress use the free parking shuttles. It gets to be a tough thing to get through our neighborhoods. Parking to the west is not simple, because of the creek, and there's, you know, not a lot of neighborhoods to the west. So if everyone parks in our neighborhoods, it's kind of a cluster to get out. So use the free shuttles. They're there, they're quick, and to the...
Where's the handicap parking at?
There is handicap parking available on the parking lot side of Inkster until it is closed. If not, then there's handicap parking here.
Are we reserving that only for handicap? Are you allowing anybody else to park there as well?
There are signs there.
Okay. And what time do the shuttles stop picking up? I've had people miss the last shuttle, and they have to walk back to Town Hall.
Shuttles run till, usually take two or three trips, and once everyone is gone, we then, they're done.
So there's no time?
There's no time, but roughly 11:00, 11:15. The police do not open up the roads until they speak to us, then with all the shuttles being gone. So if there's someone who's sitting in the park and just doesn't want to leave, and is 45 minutes behind, they have to walk.
Okay. Thank you.
When do the shuttles start?
6:30. 6:30 from here. I'm sorry. Yeah. 6:30 shuttles start from here, you know, down the ride, a lot of buses will be taking you there, and then we have the three buses and the school district buses. Should be a great time. Weather's supposed to be hot, so dress cool. It's always a great time, some great bands. The festival committee has been hard at work, and hopefully we'll see everyone there this weekend. And we are in need of some volunteers. Handful, we need some folks, so if you're interested in volunteering, we will, we'd love to have you there.
I'll trade the bus.
That's it. I will see you there this weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And other than that, I just want to wish all of the dads and stepdads, happy Father's Day this Sunday, and be safe, and come over to the festival, have a grand time. So is there anything else for the board? Hearing none? This meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, chief.
It contains... [crosstalk]